Fourteen hundred and sixty-six absentees.
If you want me to mute myself, I have a problem.
Ah, that's what I'm, I wanna make sure, because I got some more in this morning.
Good morning, Terry.
Here we go.
Morning, Jeannie. Everybody.
Good morning.
Seven oh three.
Terry, is that one of those photo bag drops that you're setting in front of?
I am, yeah.
I like this.
It's to hide, it's to hide all my music gear behind me, so.
Actually had one of the, had one of those installed at home, so. In the bunker.
In the bunker. With all his MREs.
I thought it would have been here. Because he said he probably would, but.
Morning, Bruce.
Good morning.
Sorry. Fourteen seventy-three, seven oh three, you're back.
I don't see Robert. Is he planning to attend?
I thought, Mike, I thought he was.
Okay.
The other Robert.
Oh.
Shall we, uh, what's, what's, what would you like to do, Lisa? Do you all, y'all wanna give him a few more minutes, or?
Give him a call, see if he's having technical difficulties.
I could text him and see if he's.
Okay.
Just so you know, as of yesterday, fourteen seventy-three ballots have been issued and seven oh three have been returned. Yesterday was a fun day. One thirty-seven went out yesterday.
Lisa, if you could just compare that to previous city elections, that would maybe be helpful.
Um, there is no comparison. I, I'm glad to say I've got nothing to compare that to. Um, two thousand and sixteen, very same election, twenty-three sixty voted total. In the entire election, only sixty-four of those were absentees. But that's really no comparison. We didn't have a pandemic in sixteen.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Robert.
It's like he's still connecting.
There he is.
There he is.
Can he hear us?
Hello.
Good morning.
Morning.
Shall we convene? I called your order, the emergency joint meeting between the Waynesboro City Council and the Waynesboro Board of Elections. Um, and would we like to do the pledge of allegiance? Is there a?
I can stand up.
Flag sort of behind me. You wanna try that?
Yep.
Listen, you're, I shouldn't stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, the first item of business this morning is to consider a motion to amend the agenda to include consideration of moving the polling places for the June twenty-third primary election. Is there a motion to do so?
I'd do so.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All who's in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two is a relocation of polling location for the May nineteenth local election to Kate Collins Middle School, sixteen twenty-five Ivy Street, for the May nineteenth local election due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic and resulting executive orders fifty-one, fifty-three, fifty-five, and fifty-nine in accordance with the Virginia Code. Um, and with that, I will hand that over to our Board of Elections officials to present the matter to council.
Hi, this is Robert. The organization. Uh, our request is really quite simple. And you, we have already made a change in it. We are awaiting the state, Lisa could verify this or not. We had been approved already for our original proposal, which, which was Westwood. But we had made an estimated mistake in meeting the requirements for a, a, a new location. That requirement is we have to be one mile with, from the border of any one of the wards. And a new one was proposed to us, and that by the city. And that was Kate Collins Middle School. We went over there. We find it perfect for our needs. It's large enough. We have to have a thing called separate but defined space. So we don't move all the wards into one location and have just one ward. We actually have to have four separate wards in that location, functioning separately, having separate poll books and separate voting machines. So literally, a person who comes from Ward D will walk in and be instructed to go to Ward D, where he or she will vote as they normally do. Uh, and that's the same for A, B, and C. The, it meets the ADA requirements. There's plenty of parking, more even than, than Westwood. And we have already spoken to Principal Herndon, and he has been, and Dr. Castle, and they have been very, very willing to work with us, made some recommendations, and we are ready to go with that. Having said that, we would prefer, of course, voting by mail for absentee voting. That would be the safest way to do it, especially during the pandemic. Uh, and we are hoping to get the assistance of the city to support us in that, which they have done to, to a large extent already, but we need a much bigger presence. And we also have to consider not only the May election, but we have to consider the possibility that we'll be in the same circumstance for the June election. The June primary, Republican primary. Where, we are moving, as we heard the governor say yesterday, to be more lenient with some of the things, opening and closing. And when, I, I do wanna say, the voting area will be, has a different definition of number of people in a building. It's not gonna be the ten. It's based on, as if we were a supermarket. So you can have a lot more people as long as the numbers are controlled and social distancing is respected. The other thing I put forward before, and which we, as a, as the Electoral Board agreed, we needed certain personal protection equipment and additional equipment, which we've asked for. We are awaiting still the State Board of Elections to respond to our requests. Certain things they will be giving us, they promise, is how we're gonna handle the hand washing and cleaning and sanitizing of the locations. And that brings me to my next point, which is that we are neat, we, we have, we think enough offices of election. We've gotten them from other areas of the state. Seven people from Albemarle County are willing to come, as well as several others. We have five or six, maybe seven from our own offices of election. However, we're gonna need people to assist us in another manner. During normal elections, we have pages from the high school. And what they do is they help what we can call crowd control, though I doubt there'll be great crowds for this election, so that we can get people to come in and out in a proper number and get them to the correct ward. And we also need those page-type helpers to do the sanitizing, because the offices of election, though we have enough, we are gonna be barely just there to run the election normally. And the assistance from the city is what, we've always succeeded because the city has assisted us in every way manageable. And now we're coming again to you to make sure, I'm sure you will, help us run this as a smooth, integral, honest election. Any questions?
Thanks so much for that. We appreciate it, and all of your work and, and the Board of Elections and Lisa's hard work in this regard and these circumstances. Are there any other, are there any questions? For Robert or members of the Electoral Board?
Robert, I know that in Ward D, historically, I think it's been Fishburne students that have often been the pages. And I don't think they're in session at all. So have we reached out in any way to any of the clubs or groups at Wayneborough High School to, to solicit volunteers? Not yet. We were hoping, I, I'm not sure we want youths. They would be the best for safety reasons, because that's one of our problems. The reason why we had to reach out for offices of election elsewhere is over seventy-five percent of our offices of election are, in my opinion, making the right decision not to work because of their senior, their, their age and their immunological issues. But we were hoping to have, if we can get high school students, we'd be more than willing to accept that. That would be great. Again, they don't have to go through a training of offices of election. They have to take an oath, whoever comes and helps us, and they have to abide by certain rules, which we will teach them. But they're really there to act as our custodians and our monitors of who can and cannot come into the wards. Okay. And we have, I know, Lisa, that I have submitted your name and email to several youths in the community. Have you gotten any response from college students and others?
Yes, thank you for that. Received about four to five college kids. I was waiting for today to compile the list. Actually, I have about fifteen from Albemarle that are are former workers there. We won't be able to pull them in June, unfortunately, because Albemarle will be having a dual primary, so they're gonna need everybody they can get their hands on. But hopefully, by that time, maybe some more of air officers will step up and, and want to be able to do June. So I'm waiting for today. The other thing that I think that Robert was meaning to do with outside workers or custodians, so to speak, is that will also help with anyone that needs to vote curbside to alert each precinct. And hopefully, the voter already knows which ward they already vote in. It, it's gonna be a, quite a bit different experience for folks. And we've already had some calls today if the polls were open today. So that was, and yesterday as well, I was really surprised that a lot of people still don't know the, the election's been moved.
Lisa. Lisa?
Yes.
Did we put up any notices at the polls where they normally would be at telling people?
We have not, we did not today. We're planning to do that, though, prior to the nineteenth with instructions and the directions of where they should go.
I don't know if it'd be available today. Might save you some time to just put something on the door.
That's true, too.
People drive there. Of course, if they pull up and there's nobody there, they should be able to figure it out.
Exactly, exactly. So far, no one has shown up at their polling place and called. And then back to another point I had, I thought we had to do this separately as far as voting to move the May. I didn't know that we could do May and June together.
We'll, we'll, we'll consider them under separate motions, but we can, we'll be able, we amended the agenda this morning to add the June primary as well.
Okay, and as far as the state goes, they have already approved it. Of course, they approved it for Westwood. I'm just waiting for Kate Collins' approval. So that's done. And I've also sent Mike the database for labels for all the voters in the city.
Okay. Robert, you had mentioned also support in getting the word out. What do you all think would work, or how can we contribute to that effort? It, we have to do a huge promotion campaign, and we have to use every resource we have. Social media, public media. We're gonna have to take ads anyhow, informing the public, two ads have to be taken in newspaper, local newspapers, to inform the public that the wards have been moved. But we would need, in addition to that, we think, press releases. The city has already moved, and I wanna thank Mike and whoever else was involved. We're back on the front page of the opening of the website. And it does say about the change of date on the election. I would like it to say more about absentee voting. They, they can still request absentee votes until the twelfth of May. And the more people who absentee vote, the fewer come to the polls and the safer we'll all be. Any kind of program that the city can come up with and help us in promotion of this would be, would be great. The newspapers, the radio, radio, television, public relations, reaching out more from the board. If it comes from the city council, I think we'll have more impact and we'll have better chance of being shown to the public on those, those media devices.
Everybody getting a mailer, which I'd like to know when that's gonna be sent out with the instructions with the new wards being at Kate Collins and telling them if they could vote absentee, providing them with an absentee application, sending that to every voter should be, go a long way to inform the voters of the change of plans for the election. How's that stand, Mike? When will that go out?
So would you like, Mr. Mayor, to me to address that?
Yeah, if you would mind.
So the mailer has not been prepared. I've been communicating with the printer to try to understand the cost and different forms that we can use. In all candor, I don't think that it's a resource well-spent at this point to include an application for absentee ballot. Interested voters could have had an opportunity for several months up until now. And what I, my recommendation and intent is, until told otherwise, is to inform the electorate of the change in the polling place, inform them of, of the online ability to apply for an absentee ballot, but to manage the expense and speed with which that mailer could be made by probably eliminating the application.
I disagree with that, and I'll tell you why. Like you just said, a lot of people have not, don't realize what's going on. Not, not everybody has a computer. We talked about this deadline, about May the twelfth being the last time you can apply. And give everybody a chance to vote, and I'll be fair. I think that that application should be enclosed for the people that don't have computers, to make it as easy as possible. And since you're sending out a mailer anyway, it's not much more expense, expense to put another application in the, in the mail. I don't know what the expense would be other than to produce the applications.
Well, I, I think the conversation's been respectfully that we're a week away. Mike received the labels this morning. The production time, by the time we could get a mailer out, would be towards the end of the week. The mail has to go to Richmond to be sorted, brought back to Waynesboro, and maybe arrive in people's mailboxes on Tuesday, and the deadline to apply for absentee is Tuesday. So whereas if we could do a postcard, we could demonstrably reduce the cost and then include that web link that the folks could log on and, and apply online immediately and not have to, perhaps not even have a stamp at home.
What you're saying is basically we've run out of time to send the applications. Is that what you're trying to say?
Right, I think that would, would have been.
It's not a matter of, it would be better if we're out of time.
Yeah, I just don't, I think we're gonna spend a lot of money for something that may arrive at people's homes past the deadline.
I agree.
Yeah, that'd be the concern with trying to find printing and get that many applications put together and in the mail. I'm afraid that. I just wanna be sure that when you, when you're gonna make this postcard, we have to have certain language. There are certain, there's about three, that must be on it, in line with state requirements.
I think somebody's not commuted. There we go, okay. Sorry, Robert, go ahead.
You have to have certain specific statements made on the device, whether we use a postcard or a letter. So when you revise it, please let us look at it to edit.
Without a question, you all are the experts here, so we're gonna make sure that, that, yeah, that there's a vetting, a thorough vetting of the language.
Has all that language been sent to Mike so that he knows what to put on there?
Yes.
Okay.
But it depends on the size of the postcard.
Right.
There are some things we can. So, yeah, there are some things that we can remove, but most of it has to be there.
Robert, this is Jeannie. I have a question. I mentioned to you earlier, is it a possibility that we could eliminate for mail going to Richmond and then coming back, which is, we're talking about a timeframe?
So I have communicated with the State Board of Elections about that issue. I've also communicated with, not that he pays attention to mine, but my, I've communicated with the governor. And I have had the, the Virginia Electoral Vote Association has approached both the State Board of Elections and the governor about having that happen. They are seriously considering it, but not for May. They might, they're seriously considering it for June, and God forbid if we need it in November, so that we can expedite mailing. And they seem to be inclined to believe that they might be able to do something, but the U, US Post Office is a separate entity and it would require federal intervention.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Lisa. As a rule, when we take ballots, I take ballots down every afternoon. I take them inside and tell them this is all in-town mail. For the most part, they do a good job of keeping it here. I don't know how they would feel about thirteen thousand pieces dropped on them to keep here. And not all of it do, even when I bring it in, like yesterday, the load that I took, which was after five, and of course, they were closed, but they've been really amendable to work with, so this is just the locals.
Good. Thank you.
One of the things that Lisa has done, which has been excellent, we have a drop box in the Gorsuch Building entrance, where people who don't wanna pay for postage or don't, are worried about it getting back to us in a timely manner can hand-drop their ballots when, after they've received them and voted, they can put their ballots there. And we'll be sending you later in the day some other more defined assistance, how you can help us. And one of the things we're gonna look at is our lock boxes. These are like post boxes, but they're strictly for voting, where the voters can drop off their already voted ballots. We might not be able to do this for May, but definitely we could do it for June. But right now, Lisa has set up a box of where people can go to drop off their ballots. We wanna make this as painless an issue as possible.
So one, one question that I, that I wanna extend and just maybe add to question, but maybe a risk is the number of provisional ballots that may need to be filed on election day.
That's a, that's a, we're gonna be prepared for that. That's one of the main things that we'll be training on, because if you've been issued an absentee ballot, when you walk into the polling place, whichever one you vote, when they pull you up in the poll pad, which is the electronic poll book, you will already be marked as voted. And they'll go, well, yeah, I asked for an absentee, but I trashed it, believe it or not. I've already had people do that and had to reissue because of this whole thing of when the election was going to be. And then when it was said that the governor was gonna trash all the ballots, we'd have to destroy everything. If they have the ballot with them, that is best. And they would then hand that ballot over, and then they would be able to vote normally. Otherwise, if they don't have the ballot with them and it has not been returned and voted, they would have to vote provisionally. And that's quite extensive paperwork. And then the Electoral Board would decide all of those things on the day after. Jeannie's shaking her head, so she knows. She's dealt with them.
So, so as of this morning, you've issued one thousand four hundred and seventy-three ballots.
Correct.
And what's, and, and seven hundred and three have been returned.
Correct.
So fifty percent response rate, and you know, I think we would all like to see every last one of those returned. But again, under the circumstances, and I think a lot of mixed messages that have, we've all been dealing with.
Absolutely.
I think is, that's certainly, I think, a concern where, maybe even a provisional, I'll let you all, the experts, take care of it, but you know, maybe even a provisional ballot station at, to explain what the process is for folks, because I, I am concerned that there could be several hundred.
I've been trying to, as far as social media goes, I've been trying to keep that up to date with stuff that I felt like voters need to know now. And we'll do that after this meeting as well, as well as on the city website. The issue with provisionals, that usually, as a rule, is a chief or assistant chief duty. So they're already geared to knowing that that's gonna be, they, the voter gets pulled aside and they, they work with them, because that ballot does not enter the voting machine whatsoever.
Dr. Hostetter, you had asked how you could help get it out, and I think you have a robust social media presence, as do our other city councilors. If each of you could disseminate the message that way, I think that would reach a broader audience.
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean.
That'd be very helpful.
I'd certainly encourage everyone to do that.
I'll assume then that we can, we'll get a sort of lowdown of the information of the time. I mean, well, obviously, we have to take the vote to confirm Kate Collins, but presuming that's gonna happen, and any other particular instructions so that we can quickly and accurately report that, rather than each come up with our own text and, and flub it up in some way.
Sure, we, we certainly can do that, and Lisa's done a very good job, so I'll have her, Lisa, if you would, send that to the city councilors so that they can disseminate that, and also Mr. Hamp, and anyone else who is willing to participate in getting that word out.
Well, the Waynesboro Facebook page, if you wanna use that, whatever I post on that, you're more than welcome to share it, whatever.
I have a question for Lisa.
Yes.
The absentee ballots have to be witnessed. There was some confusion about when the Attorney General said that the, I think the ones for June or July do not have to be. Do the ones for May still have to be witnessed?
That is a good point, and we just ran across that yesterday. Yes. All May ballots still have to require a witness. June is still up in the air. That's being challenged. So that's gonna be an interesting one, too. But right now, yes, May, all of those have to be witnessed. It can be, anybody can be your witness. People struggle with that. A neighbor, husbands and wives can witness each other's. That's not a problem. But you're right, May is still requiring.
Lisa, the person that witnessed it, they do not have to be a registered voter, do they?
Because, no, because we won't know.
Okay.
Just to let you know, June is right around the corner. On May eighth, voting, absentee voting for the June primary begins.
Yes.
So we're going to have, we already have had some confusion on requests for who needs what absentee ballot.
And just so you know, I have a whole folder that I've not gotten around to because we've been a tad bit busy doing some other things with the May election. But yes, Friday, all ballots for June have to be mailed out.
Geez.
Yeah. Just to let you, also, I just wanna, and I'm saying this, not just because she's here, but because you have to know. If you have, please understand how hard both Lisa and Perry Price, her assistant, have been working. In a normal presidential election, they handle seven hundred and twelve, the last time, absentee ballots. And they've already handled one fat, over thirteen hundred, fourteen hundred, whatever it is. That's enormous, and it takes an enormous amount of time, because each one has to be handled individually. Every vote has to be verified. It's just an enormous task. And, and she deserves all our sincere thanks for doing that. It's been remarkable.
It's getting to the point, too, that I don't have any more room hardly for the ballots that are coming back. We will, so you know, and this is allowed, we will probably start doing some pre-processing. Probably will be sometime next week. I don't know when we'll fix that in. We're going to have to do training, we're scheduling training for the fourteenth of all of our election officials that are agreeing to work. So, but yes, we definitely need to start pre-processing.
Question for Lisa?
Yes.
If the ballots are not filled out correctly, then they're voided and they're no good. Is, do you notify the people or do they just lose their vote?
All right, so the only way, let's say, and we've had this question. Most people are voting for city council and they're leaving off the school boards because they're unopposed. And they will ask, if I don't vote for those, does my ballot count? Absolutely. You could, a voter could get their ballot, whether it's absentee or in the precinct, and only mark for one race. That ballot's still going to count. The only way that it would get rejected is if they overvoted for maybe one race, but they voted everything else fine. We can still allow the machine to take it. And we don't know, once those absentees that we start pre-processing, the ballots are, the name and address of the voter are verified, then the ballot is emptied into a bag. And so then all they, all get mixed up, and then we start putting them through the machine. Should there be an issue with the ballot, we can override, so the machine will accept it, so no one loses their vote. The only way that we can't override is, say, a voter gets the ballot and they go out into those timing marks that are on the outside of the ballot. If that happens, the machine absolutely will not take it, and there's nothing we can do. And at that point, we wouldn't really know whose ballot got rejected, which is the whole beauty of absentee. And a lot of people don't understand or trust absentee. That's mind-boggling to me. But I've tried to explain, we have so many checks and balances when they come back. It, when it goes out, it's documented. When it comes back, it's documented. The only way prior to that ballot, when it, before it goes into the machine, that it would be rejected is something that they didn't do proper on filling out that envelope B with their name, address, signing, or having a witness. And at that point, then we know whose ballot it is. It never gets looked at. They just, it's rejected, and they get a letter from me after the election stating the reason their ballot was rejected. And I can say right now, I think, out of the seven, uh, seven oh three that we've gotten back, there's only two in question. That's not bad. That's very good. I hope this makes sense.
It did, thank you.
Because if you don't, if you've never voted absentee, when you get that envelope, I know it's daunting, but there's instructions, detailed instructions, and that's the very first thing you see. And it's amazing what people come up with. They never cease to amaze me.
I have a question.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Elizabeth, are we in, we're, we're in a meeting, official meeting, are we not, the Electoral Board with this, the city council?
Yes, it was posted as a joint meeting.
Okay, would you mind if Julie provides us with the minutes? Because I don't think we're taking minutes, are we?
It's being ordered, so I think we could probably look at it again. I see.
I mean, I wonder if Julie can let us have her minutes of the meeting, so we could record them for us.
That's true. Yeah, we would need some written.
We need a copy of the minutes for the Electoral Board of this meeting.
Yeah.
Usually, Elizabeth or Robert takes it, but I don't think we're taking minutes right now.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's a, it's a joint meeting, so Julie will transcribe it on the behalf of the bodies.
Thank you, Karen.
I did want to point out one thing, because of the overwhelming work that Lisa and Perry have been doing. We need to have Perry full-time for this election and also for the June election that starts this week for absentee requests. That's something that we did not put in the, we've requested, but have not gotten approval for. So I think one of the things that we want to ask for is short-term approval to move her to full-time. We desperately need the additional manpower hours.
Understood. We'll, we'll, Mr. Ham. Okay, well, um, any other questions? Okay, hearing none is, is there a motion to move the polling place? We're back to the polling place. So we had a great discussion. Appreciate it. I think it happened. Is there a motion to move the polling place to Kate Collins Middle School for the May nineteenth general election? Thank you. Is there a second? We'll get Mr. Allen who's made the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Do you think we need?
We need to go together.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Are the motion carries? Item three is to consider a motion to temporarily move the polling places to Kate Collins Middle School, sixteen twenty-five Ivy Street, or the June twenty-third primary election due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic and resulting executive orders fifty-one, fifty-three, fifty-five, fifty-nine, and in accordance with Virginia code. Add that discussion and appreciated that. Is, are there any questions pertaining to this motion or to this item? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to move the polling place to Kate Collins Middle School or the June twenty-third general election?
Don't move.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, that's actually a primary election. Let me restate that.
Right. Don't move. For the primary.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, Bruce. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right, well, having no other further business this morning, I just want to, again, extend our appreciation to the Electoral Board and Lisa and her staff and for these efforts in these trying times and, and appreciate all the hard work. And we will all get through this together. And I look forward to seeing voters turn out on May the nineteenth and June twenty-third at Kate Collins Middle School in the cafeteria. That's on the upper parking lot. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll make that second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all so much this morning.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.